Number one, let me welcome you to this facility, Johnson County Mental Health Center. My name is David Weedy. I'm Executive Director of the Mental Health Center. I am not in charge of this meeting. That's my first disclaimer. But I do want to welcome you to the Mental Health Center. And I want to let you know that if you need to use a restroom, you've got to have a hall pass. And we have electronic door access controls. And there's four of them up here. And if you just walk out this door, you're going to need a right and through the doors over there, you'll see the little red light there and just hold the pass up there and it should give you access. You go about halfway down, there's kind of a long hall and it's on the right for the rest of us. You all have got to take care of these doors. Again, welcome to our facility. And I'm going to turn this over to the person who is truly in charge, Bill Pray, who is the CEO of the Mental Health Center.
Thank you, Dave. Welcome to our town hall meeting today. This is a very special event that brings together advocates from across the state who will focus on some important issues with citizens of Kansas. These coalitions represent broad groupings of Kansans who do important work for individuals in Kansas. First coalition is the Big Ten Coalition. This is an association of organizations and individual advocates who believe in enhancing choices for home and community-based services for disabled and elderly Kansans. Second coalition is the Kansans for Quality Communities. This is an organization representing education, healthcare, people with disabilities, and state workers who do the work of keeping Kansas communities strong and healthy. Both coalitions represent Kansans who believe that the quality of our communities is at risk of being lowered if state budgets are cut through. These groups are urging legislators to value the quality of services in our state and develop a budget accordingly for both next year and succeeding years. As our state moves into this uncertain future, we ask these questions. How can we strengthen and improve upon our community's quality resources for Kansans with disabilities of all ages? This includes, but is not limited to developmental disabilities, physical disabilities, mental health challenges, frail elderly, traumatic brain injuries, and children with severe emotional disturbances. How can we strengthen and improve on our community's investment in quality public education? And how can we best protect and improve upon our community's investments in both the quality of public workforce and our public infrastructure? First, you're going to hear from Dave Weedy, who's the Executive Director, as I met earlier, of Johnson County Mental Health Center. He's going to talk about, provide a budget overview that explains how Kansans' quality of life has been impacted by state budget cuts and about the risks it faces in the future. Dave?
Thanks, Bill. Let me give my second disclaimer. I am not a budget expert by any means, although I'm very conversant with the mental health budget. But I am not so conversant about the other budgets that we just want to briefly review and give you an idea of some of the numbers and what the state money line. And I know there are people in this audience who are much more expert than I am. So I'm going to call on you guys to correct me if I happen to get it wrong. But what we basically wanted to cover were five areas. Starting with education, developmental disability, the aging geriatric population, community mental health, and then finally, our state employees, who in many ways are part of the backbone of our public service system. But we've read or heard a lot about state aid to education and the cuts. In fact, one of the things in play now is the governor. And I believe that for this current fiscal year has proposed reducing state aid per pupil to $3,780. At the beginning of this school year, as I understand it, it was $4,012 per pupil. And going back to 2008, it was $4,400 per pupil. Now, so for starters, did I get that right? Nobody's going to contradict me. Okay, I got it right. And I think it's important, and it's important to start out with education because in many ways, a good quality education system is the foundation of high-quality communities and a high-quality workforce. So I think it's very appropriate to start with our education system. So, moving on, developmental disabilities. The governor, as I understand it, has proposed taking $3.5 million out in state general funds. And this would provide community-based services to approximately 300 Kansans who experience developmental disabilities and who don't qualify for the DCB/ACDS waiver. Again, did I get that one right? Nobody's going to contradict me. I may get through this and I may get all of them right. Looking at our aging, our geriatric population, and this kind of startled me when I saw it because the governor is proposing cuts of $2.9 million to the frail elderly waiver, $1.3 million to the Senior Care Act, and $300,000 to the senior meal program. And if you think about it, last year, in-home services were provided to 5,550 elders with over 5,800 receiving services under the frail elderly waiver. Again, I'm looking at Debbie because I know she has all the answers. And did I, okay, I got that right. And I think if you have read some of the recent articles in the press, you can see how much of an issue this growing population of people over 65 is in our community and especially in Johnson County. And I count myself among those folks. So I will eventually be taken care of, I guess. Community mental health centers. Community mental health centers in Kansas serve about 130,000 people who experience mental illness each year. We have received in the community mental health center system a 65% grant in our state grant funding over the last three years. We've lost about $20 million. The governor's proposed budget calls for another $15 million cut in our state funding for community mental health centers. And I know this pretty well because for Johnson County Mental Health Center, if that happens, it means we will lose another $1.5 million in funding just for our organization on top of the $1.8 million we've already lost. So I think that is very significant. Then finally, state employees. And as I understand it, there was talk in the legislature of reducing salaries to state employees. And I think that is off the table now. At one point, they were talking about a salary reduction ranging from 2.5% to 7.5%. As I understand it, now there is an across-the-board 1.9 agency cut. And whether or not that's going to impact state employee salaries or not, I'm not sure. But certainly, state employees, in many respects, are the foundation of our public service system. And I have met over my career many, many, many dedicated, high-quality, high-caliber state employees who work across the board in our SRS system, in our state hospital system, in our hospitals for the developmentally disabled. So I think it is essential that we support a good, high-quality, adequately compensated state workforce. So, Bill, that's a very quick review.
Thanks, Dave. It's a pretty grim picture that we're looking at here. And we're hoping to hear from some folks who can really give you a feeling for what this could mean for individuals. Our public skills are an essential part of any community. And their quality really foretells what the future of any society is going to look like. We've got somebody here today who's very involved in education and provides some thoughts on what is at risk. Linda Sieg?
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Sieg. And I am a product of Johnson County. Although I was not born here, I moved here when I was a toddler. I graduated, was a student throughout the Shawnee Mission School System and graduated from Shawnee Mission East in 1981. 11 years later, after graduating, I returned to Shawnee Mission East to my alma mater to teach Spanish. And in the 20 years that I have been at East, my daughter, my oldest daughter, has graduated from Shawnee Mission East. And I currently have a son. And my younger daughter are also students there. Many things have changed the last two decades at my alma mater. Some things are pretty visible. We finally got their conditioning at a school a decade or so ago. And we've had several renovations to our building thanks to the great support from our community through the support of bond issues. A few years ago, the population at Shawnee Mission East was 2,200. So many students that we couldn't fit within the walls of the building. In fact, we had to have temporary classrooms or trailers in our courtyard. And many students attended class in those trailers. This year, it's about 1,900 students. And although our population has gone down, so has our teaching staff. This year alone, 12 teachers are on excess. And District Y, more than 60 teachers are in danger of losing their jobs. Fewer teachers mean bigger classes. And bigger classes mean less attention to students. I want you to know that every day, I have the great privilege to work with young people who are just on the brink of realizing their dreams. Often, those dreams are first kindled in a classroom, on a sports field, in the band room, or on the stage. Shawnee Mission has made many deep and painful budget cuts the last few years. Unfortunately, the future for us seems to hold more catastrophic cuts. Sports, music, co-curricular activities, art, elective courses, perhaps even signature and special programs could all be a major of being overlooked. To say that students are not being impacted by current cuts and will not be impacted in the future simply isn't true. As a teacher and a parent, I have witnessed with my own eyes throughout the years how a club, a coach, or an elective class can literally keep a kid in school. It's through such extracurricular programs or extra programs that our children discover their interests and their talents. Often, it's an opportunity to experience failure and to learn from that experience. There are those, many and many legislators, who believe our only responsibility to our children is to provide them with the basics: reading, writing, arithmetic, and perhaps some science. I vehemently disagree. We must nurture our future problem solvers, diplomats, ambassadors, and inventors. Our future, future employers, employees, and parents are in our classrooms every day. I know that I look out at my students. And I know that someday, they're going to support me when I retire, when I'm 97. You know, my grandfather was a self-made, small-town business owner. He died many years ago. But I remember how he would say again and again that we would always fully support public schools. After all, Grandpa would say, they made sure that he had an excellent education. And it was his obligation to pay it forward. 20 years, a lot has changed. And a lot of people are saying, come on, people. You have to do more for less. Well, I don't know about you, but there's only 24 hours in a day. If there were 25 hours in a day, 26 hours in a day, if I could just invite my students over for dinner, I might be able to get more done. But sometimes, you're doing all you can. Things have changed, but some things never have changed. The dedication of the professionals I work with every day that fuels the commitment of the community where I live and work to provide an excellent education to our children, these are steadfast. You know, I love the beach. I love the mountains. Kansas has New York. But this beautiful state has always lacked public schools. We must fight to keep them for this generation of children and for those that follow. Because after all, they're going to take care of us.
Next, we're going to hear from two citizens who are going to talk about how developmental disabilities have affected their lives. You may have heard of invisible Kansans. That's a term that describes the over 4,000 individuals in Kansas who are currently waiting for services. This has become a scandal that is a real shame and reflects so poorly on Kansas when 15 years ago, we didn't have a Weedy. But it's something we have to address. First, we're going to hear from Mr. Daryl Holtz, who has a daughter who is a child.
Yes, I'm Daryl Holtz. And my admission ticket here this afternoon is my daughter Megan. Megan just turned 21 in January. But when Megan was three, she was diagnosed with autism. And we began a family journey of trying to understand what that was, what effect it would have on our daughter's life, how it would affect the rest of us. It's much too long and too complicated a story to take you through all of it here. But I'll try to give you just a few of the high-level things. Actually, when we got Megan's diagnosis of autism, the very next day, my wife was diagnosed with lymphoma. So it was a kind of a busy November for us that year. Things went pretty well. My wife was treated and went into remission. Megan was, you know, three, four, or five. And she sometimes yelled and didn't play with her toys quite right. But, you know, how much damage can a five-year-old do? Megan grew. And by the next time that my wife's lymphoma recurred, Megan was now 11 years old. She was on some medications that caused her to have a big appetite. She tall-waived my wife by about 50 or 60 pounds. And she had developed, we didn't give a name for it until later. The doctors now tell us that in addition to her autism, she has a condition called intermittent explosive disorder. It wasn't until, actually, a couple of years ago when Bill had me talking in a meeting, that I realized the initials for intermittent explosive disorder are the same as the initials for those roadside bombs they set off in Iraq and Afghanistan. And it's not a bad comparison because every once in a while, Megan just goes off. And when the child is doing that in the presence of a mother who is sick, who weighs 60 pounds less than she does, and so on, we had some pretty scary times in our household. We had already benefited from the generosity of the citizens of Kansas because we had support for some respite care at home. But it was at that time, after one day, I stood and watched helplessly across the room as Megan went up behind my wife and just hit her on the shoulder. And I watched my wife just go over like a bowling pin. It was at that time that we started talking to our caseworker about, is there any possibility that our daughter could live anyplace besides in our home? Now, any of you who are parents, that's a hard question to ask. I've got to tell you, that just rips at you. Well, they said there might be some possibilities. There were a few programs. There were all kinds of regulations. There were this and that. So from there, we went through about a three-year journey. My wife eventually recovered again, went into remission again. We went into about a three-year journey where at various points, we had told things like, well, the only way you can do this is to just renounce your parental rights, make your daughter a ward of the state. The sheriff will come and he'll take her away. She'll spend a couple of nights in a juvenile facility. And then they'll put her somewhere. You won't have any control over that. And we kept, well, that was hard. We kept saying, no, 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 no. There's got to be some other answer. And finally, thankfully, when Megan was 14, some very dedicated people at SRS, along with the great caseworker from the Lake Mary Organization, were able to make arrangements for her to go live at the Lake Mary Juvenile Facility in Peola. That was seven years ago. We were with Vicki Englund just this morning. And she was our admissions helper then. She's now the social worker who works with our daughter. And so again, part of what I know is that probably saved my wife's life. Because a couple of months after Megan went to live in Peola, the lymphoma came back, formed a tumor, and broke my wife's leg. And she went through a stem cell transplant and a whole complicated set of stuff. And I honestly have no idea how we'd have dealt with that if Megan had still been living at home with us. So I'm just incredibly grateful for the fact that the resources and the help and the funding were there to provide a good, safe place with wonderful caring people for our daughter to live. We had, Megan has a brother who's nine years older than she was. So he had to live through his teen years with his parents' attention kind of totally focused elsewhere. Fortunately, he still talks to us. But sometimes, he talks to us about some of the emotional scars that that experience left for him. And I still carry, you know, some scars on my arm from a time when Megan went into a storm in the car and couldn't get away from her for a while and stuff. And yet, a lot to be grateful for. Well, the timing is terrific because just this morning, we were down in Peola at a meeting. Megan's 21 now. And so she has outgrown her eligibility for school district services and some of those things. So we were signing papers to arrange for her shift into adult day services in another month. And talking about the transition that she's going to make. But again, that is made possible because of the fact that the citizens of Kansas pool their resources and provide that kind of help for our family. And without that, you know, our daughter would really, essentially, be helpless. In fact, we just got, we just got a letter. Megan writes us letters once in a while now. We got a letter from her. And she had two things in the letter. She said, Mom and Dad, when I graduate in May, I want to go to the Great Mall in Olapah and eat pepperoni pizza. And I think we'll be able to pull that off. And the second said, when I graduate in May, I'll be moving into Mom and Dad's apartment. And we kind of blanked and looked at each other and said, no, that's really not going to be possible. And we wrote her a letter to kind of explain how when her brother graduated, he got his own place. He was all grown up. And now she's going to be all grown up. And she'll be living in her adult residential facility and so on. But it just made us aware of what the world would look like if there weren't help available, if the resources weren't there to provide for our daughter's needs. Now, there are, you know, there are great economic and practical cases to be made. And we've already heard some today. I work in a church, so I, you know, I don't do the economic stuff as well. But one of the things that I think all of us as citizens and legislators and people who are concerned for our community have to remember is ultimately, budgets are about priorities. And priorities ultimately are moral decisions. So a budget is a moral document. A budget is about who we are as people. And so, asking your indulgence, I'm going to share a couple of things from the world I know best, a couple of passages from the Hebrew scriptures because we're inheritors here of this great Judeo-Christian tradition. The prophet Ezekiel, who wrote from Babylon, centuries ago, what is not modern day to write. The prophet Ezekiel, in chapter 34, wrote, "The word of the Lord came to me. Son of man, prophesy against the shepherds of Israel. Prophesy and say to them, this is what the sovereign Lawrence says. Woe to you, shepherds of Israel, who only take care of yourselves. Should not shepherds take care of the flock? You have not strengthened the weak or healed the sick or bound up the injured. You have not brought back the strays or searched for the lost. You have ruled them harshly and brutally. So they were scattered because there was no shepherd. And when they were scattered, they became food for all the wild animals. Therefore, you shepherds, hear the word of the Lord. Because my flock lacks a shepherd and so has been plundered. Therefore, you shepherds, hear the word of the Lord. I am against the shepherds and will hold them accountable for my flock. I will rescue my flock from their mouths. And it will no longer be food for them." Well, you know, in our world, the people we elect to public office are the shepherds that we count on to look over the flock in our community and especially the ones who are weak and helpless. Again, I'm very, very thankful that for our family, that's not been the case. The shepherds have taken care of the needs that our family had and that our daughter had. But every time headlines come up, you know, we always kind of look at each other. People I work with come up to me and say, is your daughter going to be okay? What's the effect of the stuff we're hearing about on her? And so Psalm 82 says this. "God presides in the great assembly. He renders judgment among the, quote, gods. How long will you defend the unjust and show partiality to the wicked? Defend the weak and the fatherless. Uphold the cause of the poor and the oppressed. Rescue the weak and the needy. Deliver them from the hand of the wicked." And I think in closing, I would just say that I want to, I want to appeal to everyone who gets a voice in these decisions. And that's us as citizens, as well as the people we elect to office. Let's make sure that we have a community that is not just rich, but good. Let's stand for the helpless, the weak, the needy. Let's make sure that the God of the Hebrews, the God of Jesus, whose resurrection we Christians are preparing to celebrate in just a few days, that God Scripture says is on the side of the weak and the helpless. And I hope we're always on God's side.
I can see any of you are thinking, well, Mr. Holtz is a lucky guy. I know he's told me he is. Parents right now are being told these same resources may no longer be available. They're being told, well, you're going to have to meet a higher threshold to access those services. And your child may not be able to be there as long. But things have changed in this state in the last few months. And that's what we're here talking about today. Our second individual is a young man who's going to talk about developmental disabilities from his own perspective. And I'd like him to come on up here now and welcome Ryan McKinney.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ryan McKinney from Leewood, Kansas. I'm a Blue Valley North graduate as of a couple of years ago. And now I'm attending a transitional program through the district called Access House. But here in a couple of years, here in the next year, I'm going to graduate. And my future is uncertain because there's currently a lack of state funding. And currently, I only receive two hours of supportive home care daily, which, as you can see, isn't good enough. I need clearly more hours to help with bathing, eating, dressing, and transportation and daily living. Families are anxious and scared about waiting and are continually disappointed when spending gets cut. I'm pleased to speak for those who can't and encourage you to do your part to help. You can do that by contacting your representatives and encouraging Senator Brownback to vote for Medicaid spending cuts. for Medicaid spending cuts. I strongly encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Some would say that the measure of a society is how they treat their seniors. We don't come up so well in that area. We have to live in a county that's one of the poorest in the state, and our seniors deserve the services to help keep them independent and in their own homes and communities. And I believe an individual today who's going to talk about senior services.
I have a helper with me, Fern Colvin, and she will be showing you some of the numbers. I know you can't, reading numbers is not the same as seeing them. So, my name is Peg Deaton. I'm a senior citizen, and I represent thousands of seniors in Johnson County and the state of Kansas. Seniors have worked hard and paid many years into the system. That makes Kansas such a great state. Seniors know what hard times are. Some of us were born and raised during the Depression. It made us proud to work hard and see Kansas coming out of the Depression. We are independent and proud of our accomplishments. But that doesn't mean we don't need help from time to time. You know, you don't want to hear all this glow and boom. Let's get down to hard facts. There are many crises in our state and county. And here in Johnson County, we're headed for a crisis. One of that concerns a very large and growing population. That crisis pertains to seniors. There are 358,171 seniors that are 65 and older. When the baby boomers come, that's in 2025, only 13 years from now, the population for seniors 65 and older in the state will be 6,604,654 seniors, 65 years and older. If the state continues to cut the community services by 2012, that's next year sometime, there will be a waiting list for, now to help our frail and elderly. You know, and I know, that 18 months waiting list is a long time. There are two things that could happen. One, they could be dead before they receive services. Two, they could be taken out of their homes and put in a nursing home and forgotten. Now, the money comparison for seniors staying in their homes and receiving services, this is per person annually, is $1,183 per person for them to stay in their home. If they are put in a nursing home, the cost will be $34,337 per person annually. Now, you know, seniors could live in their home and receive some services with dignity, and they could save the state $33,154 per person per year. We have another project program for seniors. The name of that is Senior Care Act. The program has been cut 34% the last three years. The state has cut the senior lifeline once again. Folks, I got an idea. What do you think? Before a legislator could run for senate or representative, they would have to pass a math test. Do you know what that math test would be? Are you smarter than a senior? The burden of so much of the budget, why should the seniors bear so much of that? When it comes our time to receive services, there's not going to be any services there. Now, everyone in this room should take it on theirselves to call their legislators and give your opinion. If you did, then we will serve on. Thank you very much.
We should all have a Van of White like that. The next topic is somebody's hardest to talk about, the mental health services. I spent 20 years of my career working the mental health field, and it's, in some ways, it's the closest to everyone's life experience, and in other ways, it's invisible. Every one of us has served experience, a stressor in our lives that felt like it could become overwhelming. And most of us have experienced a friend or a relative with a serious mental health issue. Basic services in mental health are essential to make the difference between an individual who acquires an institution and an individual who can live a successful, productive life in the community. We have somebody here today who's going to talk to us a bit about that experience, Brenda Adams.
My name is Brenda Adams, and I live with a mental illness. My diagnosis bipolar. I can remember times when I lived within the illness. I had no self-esteem, no self-confidence. I felt unworthy. My symptoms cycled like a roller coaster, racing thoughts, paranoia, unhealthy relationships, three suicide attempts, four hospitalizations. After some years of enduring these symptoms, I found, I found the help I needed at the Wanda Center located in Kansas City, Kansas. Their services are recovery-focused, which gives me a voice in my, in my therapy. My providers focused on my strengths, not my deficits, helping me to see my skills and abilities that were already there. With the proper medication and therapy, I saw my abilities to function in the community and improve. The Wanda Center also partnered with our consumer brand organization, Society Incorporated, also located in Kansas City, Kansas. Society's mission focuses on leadership, training, education, and research. It also offers a place where people came together to socialize, and we also did activities that would support each other. Governor Brownback has proposed making cuts in the state's mental health budget. The money he would cut is now used to help mental health centers provide care to people like me, regardless of pay. That money gets people into services. They can receive their therapy in the community as opposed to going to emergency rooms or state hospitals. Consider how much it costs to treat someone in the state hospital, almost $450 a day. Some people with mental illness end up in jail or end up in jail for minor offenses such as vacancy or disturbance of peace. A day in jail can cost about $90 a day. Now, consider how much it costs to treat someone in the community, $30 a day. Community mental health centers are a great investment. They work. They help people like me live a productive, independent life. I am an example of a productive life. I'm a certified peer specialist. I sit on the Kansas Health Solution Committee. I also sit on the Evidence-Based Practice Committee. I also am a peer leader and volunteer at a consumer brand organization, Society Incorporated. And our choice is simple, whether we pay for these services, based, community-based services now, or will we end up paying for them later? And we are persons first. We do and can recover. Thank you.
Now, we're going to hear from the individuals who make all this work. This is where you should come to understand this isn't just about money. It's about mostly young people who go into these fields out of a sense of commitment, certainly not out of interest in getting rich. And they make the difference in the quality of lives of so many people. It's become popular in some parts of the country, head mount public employees, and I hope that it never happens in this state. Let's welcome two of our fine public employees to talk about these issues, Lee Powers and Wilma Fletch.
Thank you for having me. My name is Lee Powers, and I am a registered nurse. I work at KU Medical Center, and I am here to really talk about the, my 20 years of nursing experience. My background is critical care in the emergency department. And so presently, I'm working in the emergency department. I'm also president of the Kansas University Nurses Association, CUNA. It's one reason I was asked to be here, and also hopefully I can give a different perspective that I don't think a lot of people realize that happens when you have budget cuts. I am kind of what I consider a hybrid. I am a public employee based on how you look at CUNA, which is a part of AFT Kansas. But I am, also work for the hospital, which is a public authority. So I do pay into capers. And my husband also is a public employee. He works for the state of Kansas, for the university. So as I always say, we pay all of our money into Kansas and capers. So one thing I wanted to really bring out is when funding is cut, the, initially, yes, your budget is balanced, but what are the ramifications? And I think there's ramifications that people don't realize happens when budgets are cut. For sure, with developmentally disabled, if they are not getting the care they need at home, things happen. They get infections. Where do they go? Usually to the ER. And let me tell you, working in a major trauma center, which I've done for years, it is not a nice, quiet place. It is very stressful. It can be very alarming. And that goes with any patient of any age. So, right there, you know, sometimes they're missing things. If we get that home care and keep people in their home where they're healthier. You come to the hospital, and you're here because, say, "I'm just here to get sutures," but the person next door has the flu. So now I go home and I get the flu. I mean, you know, let's face it, that those are consequences people don't realize happen. For sure, elderly, you know, numbers don't lie. She did a great job, and Ms. Bannon, talking about those numbers. And of course, that impacts us because, you know, a huge percentage of the country's money with whole healthcare reform is coming. But truly, if we can keep people in their homes and give them the access and the care they need, it truly is cheaper. It's kind of like, if you go to the doctor because you have a sore throat, then it costs usually, in theory, under $100. You come to the emergency room, it's over $1,000. So it is very significant. And I can tell you that right now, we are seeing, you know, as an emergency room nurse, the things that I'm seeing is when you cut, especially mental health beds, it is huge impact on emergency departments. Because where do they go? They don't have anywhere to go. And when you're in crisis, you know, luckily, we have emergency departments because we're kind of a safety net. We're kind of the catch-all, and not just for, we're really the safety net for the, for the entire community. Because if something's wrong and you can't figure it out, and you can't get to your doctor, where do they tell you to go? Go to the ER. Okay? And, you know, I'm proud that I can, can do that, but yet, is it fair to you? And let alone, you know, let's face it, you go to the ER, you wait. And so you come and you wait, and you wait, and you wait. But then again, there's true emergencies. And what if you are the one having the heart attack? You know, you don't want to be, you know, say, the one in line, and you know, that's why we have this, this great system. But again, when we cut the funding, people are coming because they need help, and it may not be what people will consider true emergencies, but we're doing the best we can. And it truly is a huge factor. You know, again, how I said in the beginning, it shows, okay, let's cut these budgets, but ultimately, if you place people where they don't need to be. Example, I know your daughter, let's say they've lost that funding, and there's no more homes like that. Where would they probably place her? Might just guess, if this is a personal get, would be like a nursing home. Well, they can't handle that. So I can tell you what they do, because we do this all the time. They will call an ambulance, they take her to the ER. "Can't handle this. They're out of control. You need to fix this." "We can't fix it." So then, we do what we can, and then we say, "Okay, we're going to raise things back." "Oh, we don't have a bed now." Now what do we do? Now we have to admit them to the hospital, and which of course is very stressful for patients and their families, obviously. And so, you know, I think that, you know, we don't want to be one of these states that just to match a budget, they don't realize in the end, it's costing us tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars more. And the one who truly pays the most is that patient, and that's what's not fair to them. Thank you.
I'm glad to be here today. I want to try and tell you about the mental health facility from the standpoint of a hospital, a state brand hospital. The budget cuts have been so drastic. That we do not receive raises. We've got a constant freeze, we're on constant downsized. We went from a 60-bed hospital to a 36-bed unit. We had a catchment of Johnson County, Leavenworth, and Wanda County. And since we've lost down to the 36-bed unit, all of our people that would have only come here now have to go to Oslo. It took me an hour and a half to go to Oslo. You are now bringing in your police force. You're bringing in your ambulances. You're bringing in families at the cost of gas, at the cost of inflation. How much more is being spent by these state government by doing this? Reducing everything for all of these people. Relieving everything for all of these people that can provide care for you. We need to bring it back, especially where we're at. We're at a very critical area in Kansas. We do Wyandotte County. We're right off of Rainbow Boulevard, right by KU Medical Center. We get a lot from KU Medical Center. We have walk-ins. We have people coming in all the time for care. But I also see that people who are coming in for care are damn short-changed because like they put them set out before their time. That's just so they can make rent for the next person who wants to walk through the door. But the state budget cuts, we have lost our security. We have judges saying they don't want to send them there because we don't have the security to take care of people with such aggressive behaviors. They'll go to Osloton. They send them back to us because we have an area. So we're still getting that person with aggressive behaviors. We have employees who are getting hurt continually now on the job. The same people who keep getting cut money, their wages, and all of that. I'm 56. I have nine years before I'm going to reach 65. And in 10 years that I have worked for the state, I have received an increase in my wages twice. And in that time, the most I received was simply because of the survey they did. They was going to give us a 5% raise. We got 2.5%. It froze to 2.5%. So we lost that. Now they're talking about cutting more and we're losing half. Regardless of paying our social security, we're not getting as much to have to pay out of social security. What's that do to me? How many thousands of dollars did they just cost me in 65? That's in nine years. They're taking CAPERS. They're not putting any CAPERS. How many thousands of dollars did I just give the state when I'm 65? So how far can you go before you say, draw the line? Figure some other kind of way. Commerce. They're not stopping that. It's going up and up and up every day, all the time. Within minutes, this is the bad part, within minutes, your inflation has set and shut up. You've got to draw the line. Why not consider trying to regulate some of the commerce? If they're going to want to do all this, they're going to have to give us relief some kind of way. And they're not getting it to us. We're getting hurt on the job all the time. There is people who are getting beat up. We can't, we're not allowed to use the term "security" in our hospital. We have no security. We have what they call a safety. And nine chances out of 10, that is like a 70-pound pearl soaking wet to go and take care of a person who is violent or aggressive. We're not allowed to hardly even use therapeutic holds anymore. It has to be just absolutely so-so. The workers are being hit and held. They're being abused all the time. They're written up at the drop of a hat. They don't worry about having somebody down there who's going to teach, counsel, educate their employees. You did something wrong, now you're written up. Their blood pressures are going sky-high. They're looking for different jobs. People are dropping out of these hospitals like flies simply because they cannot work there anymore. And that's running. They have already taken so much from me and I would say, as a person of 56, I think I've given enough. And it's time that they started spreading something out for me when I get there and quit taking from me. And I would say after 10 years apart, again, a raise anyway, how much more have I given them? And I would really like to see them do something about bringing security back to the hospitals as a state-run facility. If they're going to do that and they're going to take your security, why don't they put in stricter guidelines on who they can take, cannot take? We don't have that. So we don't have a safety net of that. So we're at risk all the time, every day, 24/7. And that's what I would like for you guys to think about when you leave here today and help us fight to get some of this back, to get our hospital back because it is a critical catchment, it's placement, and to talk to the legislators who come down to Rainbow. I mean, they go to Osloton. But Osloton has security. We don't. Come down to Rainbow, take a look. People are gosh darn driving their cars up to this parking lot in darkness because they didn't have lights. Backrooms are going down extended periods of time. Washrooms are going down extended periods of time. This is what budget cuts have done to us. I don't see how I'm going to deal with it because the only thing left is to lock the So I urge you to go to your legislators and let them know how far we have come to break down. Thank you.
Finally, Mark Weedy, Director of Public Affairs at Wyandotte Mental Health Center, is going to give us a perspective on budgeting and some thoughts about our policy.
Hello. If you noticed a common name.
Hi, Mark.
That's my dad, David, and I'm his son. Anyway, I want to thank everyone here for coming today. This was a great turnout. One of the things I'm charged with at Wyandotte Center as Director of Public Affairs is to help people who normally might not have a voice in the political process to help give them a voice, to connect them with their legislators, to connect them with the public, to tell their stories. And Brenda is an example of doing that. And it's very brave of people, especially people with a mental illness, I think, to stand up here and talk very candidly about it. So I want to thank Brenda for doing that and then also thank all of our speakers for getting up and just having the courage to sit and stand up here and talk about something very important and to take time out of your days to do that. And then also thank all of you for coming here and taking time out of your day to participate in this event. When I was putting these remarks together, I wanted to make sure that I was communicating a message that I think everyone, or hopefully everyone, can agree with here. It's easy for each individual sector in service to say, stop the cuts, don't cut me anymore. My feeling is, and we do that in mental health all the time, my feeling is though, that message can only take you so far. If mental health wants to stop the cuts, we're happy once our cuts stop. But, you know, people with developmental disabilities, they may not get what they want that year. I think it's time that we begin to craft a message that brings all of us together. And that's what these remarks are going to be about. Let's face it, last year's budget, this year's budget, next year's, most likely the several confronting us in the years to come have not been and will not be easy. They're presenting legislators with some of the toughest decisions they'll ever have to make. We recognize, I think in this room, we recognize that it's difficult to decide what to do when the money is running out and you have to choose between meals for seniors and shortening the waiting lists for children with developmental disabilities. I can appreciate our legislators who wrestle with that dilemma. And I was going to thank them for being here, but I don't know that, do we have any legislators here today? I'm sorry. Can you stand up?
I'm Barbara Bullier. I represent District 25, which is northeast Johnson County. I am one of your champions. All right? I try very hard. I'm a retired physician, so I get it. And the truth is, yes, it's very difficult and we don't have money. And when there's no money, you make cuts. And one of the questions you have to think about is, is the message that you want your taxes to continue to decrease? Because guess what? That's where your money comes from. So as you hear many of your legislators saying, there isn't any money, that's because they are not raising taxes. And I'm not advocating raising taxes. I'm just saying that's where revenues come from. So think of that, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. So we do appreciate them wrestling with that dilemma. Those of us working in education, social services, and the public sector believe strongly, however, that choices like this do not have to become an annual tradition. We organized today's meeting because we believe and we're certain that most Kansans believe that education, public employees, and services for mental health, developmental disabilities, physical disabilities, and seniors, that all of these services and sectors are essential to making Kansas a great place to live. They're the backbone of our physical and social infrastructures. They're the product of a social compact we've made, a social compact we've made to care for those who can't care for themselves, to prepare our children for the future, and to leave those same children with a state whose infrastructure is at least in the same shape it was in when they were born as it is when they graduate from college. The numbers we've shared with you this afternoon, you've seen a lot of numbers up here, literally, they demonstrate that with each passing year, this social compact is becoming more and more difficult to realize. None of the services mentioned is adequately funded. Many are headed to funding levels that will force treasured institutions like our schools to operate with 1990s-era budgets. You heard Brenda, Brenda Adams, you heard Brenda talk about the mental health services she's received. You heard her speak of the despair she lived in, the suicide attempts, the hospitalizations. You heard her speak of, excuse me, the hospitalizations. Today, because our state had the wisdom to invest in the creation of a strong mental health system, Brenda is living a productive and independent life. But what happens tomorrow when another person with bipolar comes to the doors of Wyandotte Center, whose funds have been cut and we've also had to cut services as a result? What do we tell her if she's uninsured? Where will she go for treatment? We do not believe that dilemmas like this are inevitable or that they're simply the product of a bad economy. Nor do we believe that it's acceptable to respond to these dilemmas by saying, we'd love to help, but we're broke. The fact is, if the paint on my house is chipping, I don't wait for the dry rock to settle in. I'd rather pay for the paint than pay for new siding. Right? Everybody pretty much want to do that? And what do I do if after making all the cuts I can in my personal budget, I can't afford the paint? I do everything I can to find the money so I can make sure that I don't have to pay for something more expensive later. I'll take a second job if I have to. I do whatever it takes to make sure my house doesn't fall apart. Kansas, we believe, must find the money in the years to come or its house will fall apart. It must move heaven and earth to do it, is what I'm proposing. Those of us in education, the social services, and the public sector believe that the money is there. Revenue cuts, I believe, are threatening to cripple the institutions and services that educate our children, care for our seniors, and help Kansans with disabilities live independent lives. I'll take for just a second, I'm going to throw some numbers at you here. This is from a report completed last year by Kansas Action for Children, a social service, or, excuse me, a nonprofit organization that advocates for children. And they do a lot of look at taxes and revenue. This is from their report. While the narrowing of the tax base was not the sole cause of the budget shortfalls, a cumulative $9.6 billion has been removed from the Kansas tax base through tax reductions, exemptions, and credits since fiscal year 1995. So let's imagine that poster up here. I wish I'd done that. $9.6 billion, okay? That's cumulative. This translates into an additional $1.2 billion in revenues that would have been received by the state in fiscal year 2010 alone, absent tax breaks. I called Kansas Action for Children today just to make sure that, I think I was safe in saying this, that we're basically in the same picture this year that we would have without all those tax exemptions and tax breaks. And I'm not saying all of them should go away, but you'd have an extra $1.2 billion. That'd be quite a bit for the legislature to play with to help some of these so-called budget crises that we're in. The Big Tech Coalition and Kansans for Quality Communities have outlined several proposed revenue solutions and materials that will be available to you, or maybe some of you already picked it up, but they're over here on the table after the event. I won't go over each of them right now. Suffice it to say that they range from lifting tax exemptions granted as political favors to using a provider assessment to generate funds for serving people with developmental disabilities. The gist is this, we must find the money. We must generate the revenue required to make Kansas a healthy, safe, and enjoyable place to live. Now, this next part is especially critical because it involves everybody in this room. If you agree with what I'm saying, if this is what you want, you cannot be quiet about it, and I think most of you here are not, and that's why you're here. You must tell your legislators. A few of you who came up here and spoke emphasized that. And I want to point out that over here, we have the addresses, phone numbers for all the legislators in Johnson County and Wyandotte County on the table there. Next week, those legislators will be returning to Topeka to begin the last days of the season. One of the biggest issues left on their plates is the budget. They can't leave Topeka until they adopt one. So now is the time to get their attention. Write them, call them, send letters to the editor if you feel like it, attend rallies. Most importantly, be sure to tell your stories and demonstrate how the dollars and cents our elected officials are debating right now have a direct effect on your quality of life. Make your voices heard and make sure that Kansas remains a great place to live. And thank you for coming.
We may have a few minutes for any questions you might have of any of the speakers. A great deal's been said today and a lot to digest.
I think they're asking you to point out, we forgot to have people sign up.
Oh, sign in.
Sign in?
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure we have all your emails so we can keep in touch and let you know about further developments or events and that kind of stuff. So thank you all for coming. If you would, be sure and sign a sign-in sheet before you go. I'd love to have your email addresses.
So one other, I want to acknowledge someone else, Michael Ashcraft, who is Johnson County Commissioner. And we have talked a lot about state budgets and the state financial situation, but I have to say that county government is also a key player in the services we receive and supporting the services we receive. And I especially want to acknowledge Johnson County Government for being especially generous in protecting disadvantaged rural citizens. So, Michael, thanks for talking.
As is always the case, it's the leaders who don't show up that you want to talk to them. We appreciate the leadership of those who did today. And don't accept that they tell you they don't have good choices to make. If they've made choices, they've got us where we are and they can make the choices that can get us where we need to be. Thanks very much.
Any questions?